Ferguson, Wolfley, for sixty-one, six thousand. Is that you guys?
Yes, that was Josh. What was that that they needed that for?
Clarinator.
We bought valves, new air valves, and the clarinator for the water pipe.
And then the North Forty, for two for three forty-five, is that you guys?
We had one.
So we have the other one, John, Justin?
I'm not sure what the other one is.
Do you have forty-five dollars?
There's one for three forty-five eighty-five, and then one for three forty-five eighty-four, but the book is empty.
Mark Forty.
They're one cent part.
I'm not sure what that is myself, but that would explain why we were over our credit limit today.
So on forty AM, we have this six.
You said Mark Forty?
Yeah.
On September eleventh, there's two charges, three forty-five eighty-five and three forty-five eighty-four.
So that must be that together?
Yes.
Does it say the return date? Does he get bill price?
I don't think so.
What did you guys get from the North Forty?
Oh, a little bit of oil, filters. We got a bunch of shit. But yeah, that's how it sounds about right though, but we only did once. Yeah. That would've been about the right date, I didn't do my.
Oh, no, if you add those two together, it's the six ninety-one.
What was six ninety-one?
Who got that?
Uh, Josh, I believe.
No, this is slipper right here.
Oh.
This is nine eleven.
I see him in behind me.
I think it's six ninety-one.
Yeah. Slip John's pliers, it's just supplies, antifreeze, wire, speaker.
Oh, that was hard to grab.
Yeah, the, if you want the purchase of this.
Yeah.
It's a, a big.
Okay. I just thought it was interesting, there was two ones that you uh.
Well, yeah, because I have to divide it, and if it's not number, I have to make one last and one more, so.
I make a motion to accept the bills for at least a hundred twenty-two.
I second.
Here we need a council determination, public information, a meeting of the wastewater treatment project foundation.
So that was just, well, what it says, an informational meeting that we could hold to let people know that they could come here and ask questions about the wastewater project before the election comes around. They were talking about preferring it to be maybe next week, so it'd be a couple of weeks before election, so if you guys think that we shouldn't have such a thing, and when, now is the time to decide that.
And that's the, then would you see there not to be here to help answer those questions?
Um.
Or?
I, I mean, I would think so, but certainly still gonna dog would be here and as many hours as possible. Yeah. It's not gonna be, it wouldn't be a council meeting, it would just be a public information meeting, from what I understand.
Do we have to, do we have to advertise and all that?
We do not, it doesn't have to be published, we will just say, hey, we're having this meeting, no.
Well, I'm good with either the evening of the nineteenth, or the twenty-second, or the twenty-third, probably the, either the nineteenth or the twenty-second, it's Friday night, too, but probably gonna be football games and such. Yeah, Monday the nineteenth or Thursday the same second of the day, so I have a different date.
Either work for me?
I'm good with either, I have a preferred Monday, but.
Monday works.
Yeah. Make motion to have a meeting, or an informational meeting, Monday the nineteenth at seven PM?
Second.
Wanted to give a quick update on the two water projects, the treatment plant project is completed, we've received the surety release today for all the insurance on it. We do have one warranty item that Albrecht is looking at, there's a crack in one of the new structures, the very top piece. So they're probably gonna come out and either soft cut that and ground it, or just replace the cone and put a new top barrel on it. So they're looking at that, whichever is gonna be easiest, it's probably gonna be a whole cone or barrel section replaced. On the water pipe project that crosses the river, the remaining funds in Army Corps is about fifty-nine thousand dollars, give or take on that grant. Karen Kelly with the Army Corps came back and said, if there was anything else that needed to be done that is project related, they would allow that to happen. So the one thing that came, or two things that came to mind is the fire hydrant that we put in initially, that the fire department paid for. We can ask for seventy-five percent reimbursement on that. So at least the fire department can recoup some of those funds as part of this project, because they're a part of the city. And then the other thing that we talked about, Mayor, when I looked at it, is maybe putting a bunch of large rock and armoring that bank of the river where everything's been excavated. That wasn't initially part of the project, but it is project related. So if we want to look into that, we absolutely can. Now, the caveat to that is whatever money is spent, it's a twenty-five percent match to the city, you guys already have that money earmarked for the total project. I don't think it would be that much, probably five to ten thousand dollars worth of rock. You know, this is fairly large rock to armor that bank if you guys want. So I just knew, if that's something you guys wanna pursue, we can get that squared away, taken care of this fall, while we still have the grant. If not, then we just need to close out the grant with Army Corps. The one thing they did want to make clear is that grant money cannot be used like somewhere else in town, it has to be very specific to that piping type project, so we're a pretty limited area. I asked if we could buy valves for the treatment building, because they're side by side and the water line feeds the building, and they said, no, that's too much of a stretch. So I tried to get the new valves for the treatment plant, it just didn't work, so. So just something to chew around, I can look into the prices on the rock, but I, I think if you're going to do it, it's crazy to throw away the seventy-five percent match right now.
So what benefits would the rock add?
So, I wish I had white orange rocks, I'm an engineer. Anytime you excavate material, put it back, no matter how much compaction you do, Mother Nature's kind of the, our, its own beast. So if we have a really high spring runoff here, and that water comes up really high, we have a new road that goes down into that bottom area where the infiltration gallery goes. That road will probably wash away, because there's a little eddy put in because of the new road location. So if we could fill in from the toe of that road at a real gradual angle towards all the new structures that are there, it'll just give that river a big sweep in it instead of an eddy. We put the road, we wanted the road, there wasn't a road before, it just gives access to all the cleanout locations on that infiltration gallery for the city. So it's kind of a necessity to have the road, but that was a pretty steep, sheer cliff, you couldn't, there was nothing you could do about it, so. It, it just future possible erosion, that being said, Mother Nature's gonna take whatever rock it wants when it gets there, but at least some thing is better than nothing. There are a lot of rocks around the structure, I don't know if anyone's looked, it may not look like it, but most of the rocks are anywhere from twelve to twenty-four inches, and then we've filled it with smaller rock to fill the joints and cap it with like rubber, and so it's a little tighter. But there's very large rocks inside that area already.
Did you have any other recommendations that we might think about?
It's, it's really hard for squatter, water line to replace it, there's just not much over there. You know, the, the grass areas already seeded and done, there, you know, it was a pipeline project, that's, that's the downfall is, we had to break the project up. If they would've gone with the treatment plant and then one project for plumbing, we could've added the valves, but Army Corps wanted it separated, so there's, there's just not a whole lot we can do. Yeah, we're hoping, well, could we replace some of the mains in town, because we did the facility plan, and they said, well, no, we funded the plan so that tech, DEQ would allow this project, so it was, you got one thing out of it already. So I, I really don't know what else we can do out there, sort of armoring, maybe that fire hydrant. You know, if we wanted to replace the other fire hydrant that's over there, it's pretty old, the two-prong, would you get that one replaced, because that would be part of it? So maybe upgrade the fire hydrants along that one line? The fire department likes to care of fire hydrants, so. But the one that's over there by the treatment plant is old, so we could, you know, just replace it, and the city would only pay the twenty-five percent match, which is probably gonna be around five to seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Thirty, what, thirty-five hundred?
Yeah, and then you only pay seventy-five percent, or twenty-five percent, so you know, it might be a thousand dollars out of the city pocket for the fire hydrant versus almost four thousand, I mean, it's a good deal, so.
Andrew, I just wanna say that whenever the county or anybody needs water, that side, did they go get water?
We did.
Because they, they can back in there, and it's easy for a truck or tanker or whatever to get in there, so.
Mutually, well, we have mutually, they have a hundred.
Actually, that I can get used a lot.
And that's the one that they was talking about replacing?
Yeah.
Since one right next to the fence.
Right next to the fence.
Everybody can put it on the fence, because you can't swing the hydra right all the way around.
Well, I mean, and, and that's the thing, we could relocate it and just run that stub right through that brand new grass you got to grow, and put it at the end of the step, so it's a little easier access versus right up against your discharge ponds and everything else. So we could just relocate it, but still put one over there.
And when do we have to decide all this, tonight, or?
Yeah, of course. No, it doesn't have to be decided tonight, but Army Corps just wants to know if you want to do something, I can put together a list of items, get a cost. If you want to pursue them, that's all I need to know, you don't have to make a decision on each one, it's just whether or not we find something to do. And, I mean, the money's there, it's already earmarked for budget to finish sixty thousand, which would almost be eighty thousand dollars worth of work, I don't, there's not that much work out there. I think the most the city would spend in matching would be two to three thousand for construction, for all of it, hydrants and that armoring, but I'll get numbers for it if you want. And then the mayor can call and say, you wanna do all of them, and just get it done before winter, in the next couple of weeks.
I move that we pursue further using the rest of the money for the grant.
I'll second.
I'll talk about Logan when I talk about Janet, the next one, so already? Okay. So, August nineteenth, we had, we did have a high pressure event in town, I think I mentioned it before, and that I was up there working on it, and it was basically a copper tube that he wrote it in, a hole in it. And that caused our pressure reducing valve on the main line to fail, and so there was a high pressure event in town. So, there's three people that, that we've discovered that this has affected, we've already, the city has already fixed Mike and Char's borough's hot water heater, and they've got everyone in for that, that's, they're taking care of. And we also added a pressure reducing valve to their house, and they have manufactured home. The other two people on here, Logan and Janet, also have manufactured homes, and they did not have pressure reducing valves on their systems either. And so, when I spoke to Logan the first time, he said that he didn't think he had any damage to his house or anything. He said his faucets wouldn't shut off, because the pressure was so high, and he thought he might have a little bit of leakage around the washer or dryer or something, and it might have affected the sheet rock or something. And I asked him specifically if there was anything we could do, and he said, well, not right now. So, he doesn't, he didn't call a contractor, he hasn't done anything more than I'm aware of, but I will follow up with him again, because I did realize that he had come to city council, and what he wanted, he's asking for a reduction on his water bill, because of the high pressure event, because he couldn't shut off his faucets. And, yeah, well, overreach, what's that?
Yeah, overreach.
Well, Randy and I looked at it today, and it looks like a normal old water bill, it's less than mine, I mean, it's, it's summer usage, you only have fourteen thousand gallons, so. My recommendation is not, not to really do anything with Logan at the moment, let's, let me go talk to him again, or have him come to city council, like when he said, have him come to say, this is exactly what I want. Does that sound fair? As far as Janet Lothe goes, she contacted me and, because she had heard that this had happened in town, and her water. Her water, her, she actually had a water pipe burst under her house on August twentieth, and so, the time of this high pressure event, and so she called the plumber, and they came out, and they, McCoy's fixed her burst pipe. And then they also put in a PRV valve, pressure reducing valve at her house. So she's asking to be reimbursed for those, because it was a, I think it's the fault of the city, I guess it's the liability of the city. But, I mean, we've already paid to fix boroughs, so I, I feel that it's fair that she's asking for this. Couple things, going forward, I mentioned already that if anybody does put a manufactured home in town going forward, that's on the lower, is where we should highly, highly recommend, they put a pressure reducing valve on their system. And they might have to sign a waiver if they don't, saying, we're not responsible if anything occurs.
What's do they come with, a pressure regulator?
Well, it's, see, I think it depends on the contractor installing the, the water lines and sewer lines, and I know Frank jumped on a certain contractor in town a couple times for these things. My house has the pressure use valve, Frank put one on mine, and other, my brother, other people have, have them, so I'm surprised that, that these people didn't. The other thing is, Janet is, is in touch with the contractor, her insurance is gonna pay for her to move to a motel while her insulation is replaced at her house, because it got wet and they're afraid of black mold. So that's gonna be coming down the line, too, I don't know what her expenses are gonna be for that. And the other thing she did mention was possible litigation against the city, which, it, it all kind of got, you know, into this, turned into this big thing, but. I think her cost is about six hundred dollars at the moment, plus a little bit of overage, maybe.
I, I didn't know she was talking litigation, so maybe we should table until we talk to her attorney.
Well, what I meant is, the hearsay from the post office.
But did she?
She did not say, no, she did not actually tell me I'm going, I'm thinking about suing the city, but, that people were willing to, you know, test my courage, maybe, so.
If there's gonna be more cost, though, I still think we should table until it's finished, you know? Don't you? Rather than making one payment now and wait to see what happens.
I second that. Do we need a motion to table Logan as well?
I think so.
Um, we should table Logan.
She should, please should.
Yes, I second that motion.
So what I got is, I've got Terry Golding, the Golding mapping survey, gonna re-align some of my property, I've got three, three lots down there, three parcels. Two of them are in the city, one of them's in Impact Area, and that sheet one shows out the condition of it right now, you see the property lines, how they're kind of far carried, and there's, and then there's elevation involved in that also. Like from the upper end down to my house, which is on the main property, there's a ninety-foot drop in there. So what I've done is I've reinforced that upper edge up there, and that's the piece I want to look at. And that's page one, so if you go to page six on the back, that's what, that's what I want to end up with. When it's done, I'm not creating any new parcels or anything, I'm just moving the lines around so that I can make sure that that protected up to my D, that reinforced that area on there. And, is there any questions on that, at that point, I'll take you through it. Page two, if you're ready on that, is the actual county survey, it shows the lot numbers, the addresses, et cetera, and that dark line is the city's boundary line currently, that's on that. And pretty much what I want to do is just slide it over to two existing markers that are already there, that Terry put in, we drew that line. And if you go to page three, that shows the slide that I want to accomplish, there's less than an acre, it's about point nine acres or something in there. And all they want to do is take that little piece and put it up to my D, which is in the Impact Area, and then, you see the other two lots, if you go to the next page three, it reflects the actual piece I'm wanting to include, you see the white line there, it's a small sliver.
And you're wanting to just add that to your?
Just to my D, which is already in there, and I'm not creating anything new in there at all, and if you look to, uh, uh, fourth page, I think it is, or fifth page, left, you see that, how I rearranged those last remaining two parcels to make more sense out of them. And that, that, the smallest one there is over in acres, which is not like it's a small piece of ground, and it's right now, it's all out of, out of my farm and in there. And I need the city's permission to have you do that, I didn't, wasn't realizing until you told me last week, you said, well, you gotta be done to get permission, you know, to slide that line over. Because I was just gonna include that in my lot, but I can't do that anymore, it's the, want all land, either in or out of the city boundaries, must be something to do.
So that means that we would just have to adjust the city boundaries to match his lot line?
Right, I'd have Terry, I'd pay for all that, just have Terry do it, because he did all your lines to begin with, he did all your mapping and everything. To him, it'd be just a computer thing, where he re, redoes it, files it with the county, so it becomes an official on there. He said, in fact, you'd only have to set one in on this whole operation, and that's for my lot line, that, that thing, that one, that's perpendicular to the new city line there, a little short.
You just, you just wanna move that line, yeah?
Yeah, about, it's about sixty, seventy feet, just move it to the east there, you see it on page two there, there, on it? And, and it takes away, you see that long sliver of that, that rock above my place there, I want to get rid of it, makes no reason to have that in there, that was a parcel that I got from Charlie Taylor, and it was available, so I took it, you know, it just has something. But it never did make sense, especially with the elevation change on that piece of ground there.
So would this reduce the amount of property you have in the city, or increase?
Pardon me?
I'm sorry, with that, and hopefully I'm understanding, with this, when we change, if we were to change that line, does that increase the amount of property that's in the city?
No, it'll decrease it by point nine, plus eight nine acres, yeah, and it'll just move it to the Impact Area, to the Impact Area.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, because all of our grounds is in there, is within the Impact Area on the.
So does this affect the city in any, I mean?
You know, there's, there's specific steps we have to take when we're annexing, or when we're vacating, so I have to talk to the attorney, and, and tell them to talk to planning and zoning, just to make sure that we're doing everything, so there will be costs involved, but that will be your responsibility, because you're asking for this.
Be a cost involved, you mean a survey or what size of?
Whatever we have to.
Yeah, whatever, whatever costs, I think, yeah.
Okay, so I would, I would have to?
Yeah, the city, we've got city, yeah.
I'd have to get some more information on that, and see if we have to send out letters, or, or anything like that, or you do, we'll have to just make sure.
Probably the adjacent property owners, they, they might, we're just double checking with our attorney, just to make sure that the city's, the city's.
Yeah, that's understood.
Yeah. I mean, I don't, I don't see any, depending what the attorney says.
Yeah, he'll be adjacent, I'm the one who's sitting right here.
Uh, I move that we contact the attorney and check and see if there's anything the city needs to do, and, and find out some more information on our end, before we make a decision.
And then the second item I have there, I guess, make sure it's quick this year, is, I watched that YouTube meeting here from the last meeting, and there was a lot of question on that metal drive down there. And so, I'm here to answer whatever questions you can about that. So I made notes of everything I have in regards to that, and if I scan those, then you can ask me whatever you need to know from me. It was built very well, it was, everything was done correctly, I think the only flaw I can find is, have you found that second meeting at all? Okay, if you read on there, we cannot find where the city recorded the second vote on there, and so that's kind of what I'm asking, that I want to have that repaired in the city votes on that. And, you read and understand this exactly, there are the first few lines of what took place. And it was ten years ago, so I'll be the first to say my memory isn't the clearest for ten years ago, on August whatever, you know?
I remember when we done it all.
Yeah, and then you come out and inspected, and Dick, you were there at the vote, stuff, and, you know, they'd voted four to zero to pass, and Dick looked an old boy, and. It was built above and beyond whatever the standards were at that time, and I, I wrote it down, I wrote it work, we put a lot of effort into that move. And as far as like, you know, the, the talk of abatement or what have you, that's just the city's business, you know, although I agree with the city, was that they maintain it like the rest of the city roads, I mean, I, I feel bad for Josh and Bill Wade, because they do get dusted out of there when that garbage truck comes in, and FedEx or one of them guys, you know? But it, it was worse this year than it's been in the past, and I talked to Bill Wade, he, he maintained Palm Latch's roads for thirty-plus years. He said that they went in there, just graded the road, did the countback treatment to it, regraded again, just walked it down in a truck, he said that'd last four to five years, it wouldn't be a yearly treatment in there at all. And even on, most of the roads in the north shadow even, you know, so the main strip, it's like in front of Josh's house there, it's not a, like, it's a huge stretch of road to take care of there. But, you know, that's, that would be up to the city, and I just want to make sure, clarify that, what went on with the, the meeting and everything, that, it was all done up and up, you know, on that, pollination there.
Is that count, actually, the one, just something we talked about putting down, they talked about best in the spring?
Yeah, it'd be way best in the spring, it'd just be a waste of. Yeah, it'd be way best in the spring. It'd just be a waste of money doing it this time of year. Yeah, it'd be. If we're under the rain already, so there's no dust coming in. And then the sun's low, and it's all shade down there, so it's not even a dust problem from here in. And we've kind of got the worst this year that I've seen. It, it doesn't affect us. We're off the end of the road far enough and, uh, you know, between like the phone company was in there doing some trenching and stuff last year, and that raised a little, and then, you know, little things added up to the whole, you know.
So it sounds like the worst dust part is in front of Josh's place.
It's actually in front of Josh's house, yeah, probably a four-hundred-foot strip there, maybe, you know.
Thank you. So do we need to do anything to like clarify this, or is this?
If, if, yeah.
To state to the city, obviously we've maintained this, it looks like you got.
Well, I, I think what you're looking for i- is.
Confirmation.
Confirmation from the city that the road is rather to the standards it was supposed to be.
Right, that's what I'm.
So, and that's what we have not been able to find in the hold minutes. So I think that's what he's looking for.
And I'd be willing to just take a vote here based off of, we've got two people that voted for it right here. On it, so, you know, they, they can testify to the validity of what I'm saying on that. It was passed by four to zero sometime in the fall of two thousand and ten.
Do you remember it again?
Yeah, I remember it.
And it maintained it for ten years, you know, they've done a good job on it. It's not like it, you know, it just popped up. I just want to be put the rest of them come up ten more years.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So, uh, trying to think about the word.
If, if you recognize the validity of, you know, what we said, it's good enough for me. I don't mean anything beyond that, just. Or if you want to enter this in the record, whatever you want to do, I'm good with all that. What, what are we doing?
Well, that, I read the, the, we had something here about what our roads and stuff are. So all of the extra maintenance is.
Yeah, it's just getting maintenance, so you do it all.
So just like what we do is, whatever we do with anything else, scrap it. What do we do with anything?
No more than you're doing already, basically. You're already following.
We use, we have the tractor on to try to smooth it out twice a year, and then I did spray this year all along, and try to, because the black and gray's are starting to come over.
Yeah.
Um, and we use the sander on a little bit, like on John, it's light or whatever, because it does get shady.
It turns to ice, so.
Right.
Yeah, just that. That's it, though. I mean, not, not too much.
Do you, you, you agree that it is up to city standards according to what they say they've done?
I would say. That it is. It's white enough, it's.
Yes, it's twenty-five feet white, that's what I was doing. Out of fifty-foot right away, which I give up a lot of the property. It's not all four of them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say it's definitely.
It's probably better than some of our actual, like, Lynn Avenue.
It's held up to ten years of pretty good use, you know, for, for getting started.
Uh, why move that we accept that it is up to city standards?
I'll second. Who's second?
I am. Yeah, thank you, uh, I just wanted to request the city to maybe, uh, look long-term, maybe look for a new home for the dumpster containers down here. People that I think are from out of the community are using it as like a dump, basically. And I've seen the mayor out there cleaning it, people from the community clean it. People have slept down there, leaving their cars down there. Needles have been found down there in time, so it's been really bad as of late, and it's clean now, but I just kind of want to request that maybe, I know it doesn't happen overnight, but if we could just maybe think of a new home eventually for those.
Mark, you're talking about recycle bins?
Yeah, that's what they're supposed to be.
Do you have any suggestions, or is that something you'd be interested in?
You know, I mean, we have a, a, an area down the road. I don't know if that helps or hurts.
Well, they were there before, but people along the highway saw them, and so they were more abused there. That's why we moved them more outside, out of line from everybody on the highway. So that's why they were moved there. Uh, I know it's like they played off sanitation, just talked about, you know, when I worked there, having them inside the fence, but then they're not twenty-four-hour access. So it's kind of a, that's why they're, I think, where they're at now.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I don't know of anywhere else that would be. Would have to, I don't think about it, I guess.
I mean, they're a central location for a waste product, you know, the city growners. And there's really no oversight, so, in reality. So anyone from anywhere can bring anything in and do. So that's really kind of the thing, that we think long-term, like, maybe a residential area is maybe not the most huge area. And I know that's an industrial area, that's what I like about it, but there are residences in there and so forth, so. This is just a thought. Oh, I thought it was a request.
I was thinking about that, if we did move them back out to that gravel area, if they could put them perpendicular to the highway, if maybe there would be less. There's just, you could see.
Right.
You know, they're not gonna be hiding behind them, like, I mean, you couldn't do it perpendicular down there, but that would probably help too. You know what I'm trying to say? There's just not enough area to sneak around behind, to park a whole vehicle behind and hide.
Well, if, I mean, what it would be worth if we could put some signs so, you know, like. I mean, I know that sign. I know we can, but for, for the honest people who were gonna do it, I, I mean, I get that part, but at least we might be able to.
Well, something that's, just like that, something that, uh, what I work relates on sanitation, they have, like where Rob parks a car, you know, you can tuck it right next to the fence. Uh, and they did cameras that kind of deter people as well. So that is something to consider. We stack them. We have to check to see if there's enough room to tuck them up next to the fence, basically where kind of where Rob parks. And make sure that their trucks can get in and out of them. That would be more shielded for the highway, like what you were saying. Or they expand the area where it comes around, where it's covered with trees, you know, when you leave and you come around that area. I don't know if there would be room to tuck them behind those trees back there. They'd have to, we'd, you'd have to talk to Amanda Lakehouse Sanitation about expanding that area.
Well, it has to be, I know when we put it in there, it had to be so, a certain size.
Mm-hmm. Well, they need seventy feet.
Here, and they can put two here.
And I don't remember how much room is there.
Be and, I bet, wherever they even I put the fence in. And it's all cemented in the ground. It won't be easy to take out.
So is, what is the drawback to having them in the, locked up in the fence? The hour, I mean?
They're only open first and third Saturday of every month, so.
Oh, like you couldn't leave that open?
No, because they leave their boxes in there for the upcoming weekend, especially this time of year, and we'll just have more available dumping. Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Too fat.
Yeah.
We could rotate them to different neighborhoods than in.
Everybody gets a chance.
It's only they would use them in different neighborhoods.
Yeah. Well, I move that we look at, uh, possible areas of, you know, get, get in contact with Amanda Lakehouse Sanitation. I pretty, I can kind of get, I kind of know what they are gonna need, but to see about possible areas back, if we can hide them down there by the bulky wayside, where they're kind of more, so the people on the highway won't see them. And, you know, maybe we'll get some other options.
How often do they, um, take those?
And do?
And do?
Uh, I think it just kind of depends on when they're full, like, you, I think we call, don't we? Or do they just randomly?
Yeah, we call. I don't know if they randomly come or not. It seems to be come all over the place.
Yeah.
I went down there the other day to put my flat, three little boxes in there, and there wasn't, I mean.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think in the past, when I worked there, uh, the, somebody would always call.
Yeah, it was packed.
Rarely.
They have.
Down the road, I mean, being comfortable with garbage and everything else.
Well, we're gonna have.
Put down here, is to keep people from putting the garbage in.
But they still are there. They're, they're still doing that. And actually, the last couple of weeks have been bad. And there's a couple of who moved into our community from out of town, and they cleaned it up to, it's such a beautiful trail. So I know people from the community are doing it. If everyone said, well, we just won't touch you, I mean, it would just be a study. Because if, if it's always full, the type of people that'll throw them on the ground are just gonna do that.
I'd say the point is right by the trailer, everybody walks on for a reason, because it is nice down there, so maybe that's another reason to look at that long-term. So I would second Councilwoman Anderson's motion to look at what the options are for either, like, hide those trees if there's room, kind of be a little more secluded, or like what you said, turn them, turn them, so they maybe don't advertise quite as much.
And just see if we can figure out a better, I know we're gonna have problems with them wherever they go, just to see if there's a better solution. You know, because like if there is an issue, maybe if it's, you know, they can, and I, I doubt they will, but it'd be easier to clean up if they're open down there, you know, Rob might, might.
I doubt that very much.
I said mine, I said mine.
You don't think Rob will clean it up? Rob will clean it up.
Maybe he'll make sure that.
He cleans it up all the time now. He takes stuff home from down there and puts it in his garbage at his house. He cleans it up. He's my brother-in-law.
But I've taken, looked after this thing down here, one down below and one up here, and it's a lot less maintenance, taking care of it down here than it was down below.
Yeah.
I mean, down below, I mean, that's all the people, it's filled it with the garbage.
Yeah, that's where he brought his things up to his house.
So, uh, I mean, you start moving it. And I, I, I monitor that down there. Make sure that you, if you don't, I can assure you, I will get a telephone call. And I have got you, um, too, and you work very friendly, and she's a relative to boot.
Why believe we have a motion and a second on the table?
Oh, there?
Thanks for the platform there.
All right. So, um, so I'm ready, I was thinking, well, probably don't want to, um, and I'm here representing the community library project. And I've got Chris Silk from the Leetac County Library District here, and Danny Kelly over here, and, uh, David's our library. And, uh, so the Community Library Project, which you probably know, is a group of community volunteers working to reconstruct our existing library building. And, uh, we're here to, we're kind of the status of our project. Um, so just to kind of recap, uh, we met with the council in December of twenty eighteen, uh, to kind of firm up a building site for the new library. Um, at that time, we went over the site analysis that the project had performed, um, and the two site possibilities that we narrowed the options down to, which were three nineteen main, which was the old Farm Bureau building, and two oh five main, which is the current location where the library sits now. Um, so in December of eighteen, um, as the Community Library Project and the Leetac County Library District suggested, the city, uh, decided to not consider attempting to purchase the property at three nineteen, which was the old Farm Bureau building, because of the potential costs involved, um, with getting that even up to code. Um, so regarding the current location, a new building, um, can be constructed there, but we discussed that the size would be limited at the current footprint, and we talked about the adjacent lot at two oh seven main, um, that has a mobile home that's currently not occupied. And, uh, we talked about how if that landlord was meaningfully to sell, um, that we could double the size of the, of the library footprint. So it wonders for us to move forward, um, we, we really need exact property dimensions so that we can create room restrictions that we can bring to an architect, that can draft up some plans, and which will enable us to go after grants, uh, I mean, because really, before you go after a grant, you've got to have pretty much your plan in place and all your backside row with, you have to go and say, here's what we want to do, and we're ready to go. Um, so until we have from the city, um, kind of a firm decision on, on whether we're just gonna stick with the current footprint, or we're gonna try to expand, we're pretty much stuck. Um, so we had talked about, um, with the city contacting the landlord to see if he was maybe, um, you know, willing to sell, to either sell, um, soon, or if he wasn't ready to sell quite yet, to maybe, uh, talk about entering into some court, a sort of like memorandum of agreement that would give the city the first option to make an offer, um, if he decided to sell at some point, he or his family, or, you know, in the future, whoever, um, was in charge of the property. Um, so at, at this point, um, we're pretty much stuck until we kind of hear back from the city on that. Um, so we're here to kind of talk about the status of that and maybe what the timeline is for when the library would, would kind of be a priority. And we know the city's has a couple of really big projects that they're working on right now, but, um, but the library is really important too, so just wanted to frame it up again.
Do you have something you want to say? Okay, because I did, um, we, we did the survey and kind of started this in, um, twenty thirteen, so seven years ago. And, um, six years ago, really got the, the commitment from the city mayor and the council that, yeah, let's go for it. And so we have, we're a very, very small group, but we have done a lot as far as fundraising, not that the monetary amount looks like much. But it's hard, um, even at the last event we did, which was in twenty eighteen now, because we didn't do anything this past year. Um, a lot of people are like, well, but where's it gonna be, and what's it gonna look like if we're donating money? And especially getting, we had the silent option, which was a great fundraiser for us. But that was a big question. When you go to businesses or, uh, companies and say, you know, what can you donate? And they're like, well, we need kind of the plan, you know, what's your plan? And, and it was embarrassing to say, well, we really don't have one at this point, but we, but that was something we knew, we're gonna have to get that. If we want to do some serious fundraising, we need to know where the library is gonna be and have a tentative description of what it's gonna look like, room size-wise, and, and then be able to get to an architect to start beginning to see, how much is this gonna cost? Um, because otherwise, we can't answer anybody's questions. And so I guess we just feel, um, helpless. We don't know where to go at this point, and thought that maybe if we get something from the city as far as, yes, this is important, here's our timeline. Let's say that this is gonna be our priority, uh, in, in this year or whatever. Um, you know, we've even had, um, Carol, Carol's, what's her, um, Nielsen Troy, twice has come to us and said, when you guys are ready to get serious about this library, I'm ready to jump on board. I take on a community project every year and, you know, would like to make your library, libraries are very important, and we need one in this area. Um, I want to make it a priority, but, you know, it's, again, it's kind of embarrassing to say, well, we're not really ready yet. So we've been treading water for a lot of years, and, um, it's not, it's not your fault. In fact, I said in Miranda when we got here, I feel embarrassed coming and, and not having been here sooner and be here more often to keep giving and getting input, um, because I think it's something we needed to do.
I might be able to chime in. Um, your, your process might be a little off for being the library. We just built, um, a new library for the city of Palmdale. And you don't have to have architectural drawings to go after grants. You don't have to have any of that information. Um, the city itself would be the grant obtainee, I guess. So we did a community development block grant, so five hundred thousand dollars is what they were able to get to, to build a library. Those funds are used to help pay for the design because it's really hard for a city to go out and pay for a design. Um, there's also a lot of prefabricated still buildings that are used for libraries. A lot of those companies will donate them as their tax deductions to cities. So there's a lot of things that can be done before you hire an architect. Um, the city has to go through a selection process, just like for engineering for those. Um, but you can start applying for grants immediately before you have plans and all of that. You can put in for the grants, say you need to purchase the land. I mean, if you have to buy a lot, that can be part of the grant cost. So you don't have to wait till you find the land till you know what your building looks like, because every building will look different, like every single lot.
Do you, oh, I'm sorry, do you remember who told us that we had to? Do you remember, oh, I'm sorry, do you remember who told us that we had to...
Yeah, we spoke with an architect who helped with the Winchester building. Her name seems to me right now, and I don't know.
She was on that first one, wasn't she?
Yeah.
Yeah. She's the one that told us that we had to have all those room descriptions and everything before we could go forward.
And also, we, we went to kind of grant writing 101 class with Seda, and that was kind of the input that we got there too. So it's good to know that there's other options.
Yeah. So we were the first library in Idaho to ever be funded with block grant, Homewood was. It's really atypical, there's some tricks to it. Spinning it as a community center as well. If you hold any community event, it's now a community center slash library. All of a sudden, it opens up three times as many grant options.
Are there, you know, are there restrictions on, or requirements to charge for the use of the community center?
Um, well, typically, it's a library if it's owned by the city, they don't charge for use of their facilities. They might for rental, but this, it wouldn't be like you rent it out kind of thing. It would be that you, as the city, are holding a public meeting there, or an after-school something or other. It's a safe place for kids to go after school. That is the community use. So it's not just, "Oh, you're only coming in, reading a book, or getting on the internet," but you're using it for like a safe haven type, kids to come here rather than going down and causing trouble by the river and those kind of things. So that's...
We'll do that anyway.
I'm just saying that you don't have to spend the 10s, 20s, 30s, 40s, $50,000 upfront with an architect to even start looking at grants. That's, you don't. I mean, the first thing we do on any project, and you can ask any, anyone who cares, is you find the money first. Then, then you look at the projects and what you do, because the cities just can't afford out of pocket to do that level of effort in hoping to find your money. They have to find the money first.
Well, that's good information. Thank you.
Now, with Glenn, I find that he is a long-haul truck driver.
Okay.
And I can't find any telephone for him, because he probably got a cell phone, you know? They're not listed anymore, and so all we can find out was that he's driving trucks. And when they go, they go to Texas, and he takes up a little bit of land in New York City, and then where he goes back. He is constantly, constantly on the line. And so, I haven't been able to get to him, I don't know, I don't know how to do it now. I need to get ahold of him, but I don't...
Right. Well, what about any relatives, does he have?
Not that I know of.
Everybody's gone.
I think, yeah.
He's gotta be retired, though. He would be 65.
Would it be possible to, to write a letter, granted you might not get it for a while?
Send him a letter.
Write him a letter saying, "Can you please call us?"
He will get it.
Maybe the county has an address, or, because he must have some kind of...
He will get it. That's all I can say.
Okay, so we got some information.
I know nothing. Yeah, that would be great.
If he was living at a Sullivan.
Yeah.
You know, if he lived there, why not?
Okay, okay.
Do we, do we need a motion? It doesn't say actually...
It's not an action, I don't know.
So we, we could just send him a letter asking him to contact the city in regards to the property, was it 207? And then we should look into what Andrew said about grants.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can have our grant administrator call Wendy and the mayor. I, I know Seda hasn't done, like I said, it's really atypical, but we work with Seda all the time, so, I mean, we're not gonna step on their toes, but we help them with grants quite often, so...
That's a, that's a good start.
Yeah, that would be great.
Thank you.
Yeah, we need to, yeah, if we can get some grants, give them wide land and keep going on, because we could jump ahead real fast.
And I think you probably have a resolution of 25. You guys go to...
No, oh, 1.
No, 1. Give you the city fees.
Oh, I'm on, okay, all right. I think that's like skipped one, all right.
And I think we decided to disball them for this fiscal year, do you know?
The only thing we changed was road parts, and we increased 50 cents. Dumpster stayed the same, everything stayed the same. Obviously, we didn't add any new fees, because we didn't have another public hearing, so...
I, go ahead. I think we really need to revisit this and put some time into it, because it was Amanda last time. Sounds like we're really kind of missing the bullet on some stuff, and, boy, we brought up like about, like, haven't decided if we want to have non-resident or people aren't living in their house. So I think it's just a cost-wise, we need to actually get some public input and look at like the extra bag fee and stuff like that. And if I understand right, basically, we just need to have a public hearing to do that. We just didn't do that because of the budget and everything. We just kind of ran out of time, is that...
I don't know if you need, I mean, the, the cost can be set at whatever you want them to be. We have to have a public hearing if they're going to increase more than 5%.
Or add anything like the little garbage things, they were...
We're adding...
I guess, sorry, I, because, so if we approve this, does this bind us for a certain amount of time before we can relook and, I mean, like, if we want to look at it in the spring again, just to, where we have more time, actually have, you know, this type of, everything going on, so to get, but, I just think we need to do it at some point. I just didn't know if we, if there were any time constraints on this thing.
I mean, historically, it's just been, we look at it every year right around the time the budget is, the new fiscal year is gonna start. But I don't see why you couldn't revisit this later on, and if we need to hold a public hearing to increase the fees more than a 5% or add the fees, do that if that's what you choose.
Okay, yeah, having Amanda, when she explained all that, kind of where we were a little over, a little under, and then have the time to adjust that and do it, maybe we can revisit it in the spring or summer. That way, everybody has some input from citizens too on their thoughts on what the city should pay for and what they should.
We always have little, you've got reserve, so we can get by this year.
And you'll have a, I'm sorry, I want to clear a picture with auditors kind of do their report too of how we were this past year, so...
That would give us a better idea of how much...
And when is that?
They haven't done the audit yet, right next month.
Yes, okay.
When they come and get there.
Maybe we'll get it in the spring or something.
I think they usually present January, February, October.
Um, thereabouts, yeah. I would say January is pretty average.
And I guess I would make a motion to approve the resolution and the cost of the fee schedules for 20, 20-01.
I say it.
I would, yes. I think we have the next one on 2007, or 20...
This one came from Dodd. He said it was something that they needed to have passed. I just think it has to do with the community grants that we have to have on file.
I don't see any, I didn't see any issues with it, it seems like kind of standard. Yeah. You guys want to...
Uh, sure, I'll make a motion to accept the resolution 20, 20-02.
I say it.
I say it.
So is this block grant, is this a similar thing for the upcoming bond elections? I have never seen the block grant participation...
Can you explain that earlier, because I wasn't familiar with it? I hope the development block grants is a participation plan. This is another Dodd thing.
I gotta figure...
So, so that's interesting, because we've done a lot of block grants and never had to have that one.
Oh.
They, I vote community development block grant, ICBVG. They just want to know, anytime you use their money, you have to have public meetings. They have posted, advertised. They want to make sure that the public knows that you, the city, are spending money, what you're using it on. That's kind of that, the, the general policy of being open and honest with what's going on. So you can do DEQ, USDA grants. You can get by with one meeting during the planning phase, and you're good. When block grant comes in, they require a separate set of meetings at different times. And they just want to make you aware, if you're going to accept their grant or go af, chase their grant, because the applications are due in November, be aware that you will have some public meetings on the grant application and the project that it's going to be used for if you get it, those kind of things. So it's public information requirement.
I move to adopt the Idaho Community Development Block Grant Citizen Participation Plan.
I'll second.
Yeah, I'll second.
We're all announced, and then somebody has to bend.
I move to table the review of bids in consideration to purchase a new tractor until we can acquire some credits.
I'll, I'll second.
Just enough hours in the day for it.
Yeah. I've got two weeks to give the last two weeks, and I don't got time, but... I'm the person that will talk to that policy.
I put that on there in case you guys wanted to talk about anything during the meeting. I'm certain everyone isn't ready to adopt anything yet, but if there's something that you wanted to discuss or hash out or whatever, I don't even know if anybody's had enough time to really look over it yet.
I read through it, there are some, I think there were some things we can, we can take from it, for sure, because ours seems a little outdated.
Yeah, there is some...
I have too much on my hands, I got a lot of sticky notes on it. And my other job is pretty much all it is, reading personal policies. But, you know, there's like several, not several, there's a lot we gotta fill in, and some of this may be, you know, policy-like in one part, and the responsibilities that the city designates, and it's blank. His or her designees, a designated official, who's responsible for directing the purposes of the policy, I assume I would be the mayor on that. And I guess that's something we all have to talk about. One thing I had a question on, and I had emailed Wendy on it, is comp time. And, because that is, just sitting here, and I deal with that a lot. That's what most of my officers, when they get overtime, they take their comp time, because they collect at the time and a half. And that's what it looks like in this little town.
Well, on comp time, in the good weather times, is, is they take their comp time. But if it's in the wintertime, when they have to spend more time down the streets, then they get paid overtime for that.
Do they, do they choose that or do we do that? Does the employee get to choose, or do we kind of direct that based on the season and the...
Weather, of what, because they have to fly snow, they, they get out, they get out at the five, six o'clock in the morning.
Well, yeah, I love that, because then they don't have to slide down so...
He's out there freezing these tiny off, and then, and then when, when it comes to the snows every day of the week, well, they put in extra hours and they get paid for that.
For that, right.
But in the, in the good weather, when they put in extra time for that, well, then they just kind of take off.
They take off later, because it's usually once a month. Is there, because, and the reason I brought that up, I appreciate you explaining that, Mr. Mayor, there's a, I didn't see in our, our current city policy where there is a maximum amount of comp time that can be earned, because like with, like at the police department, it's 240 hours, and that's a huge unfunded liability. Somebody wants to go cash in, that's basically 240 hours and time and a half. Huge unfunded liability. Good for those guys, but that used to be one, but now... But, you know, but, you know, so I didn't know if there was any comp time or when it had to be used, just because of that. Like, I don't, I would assume that's not an option where the employee can't pay out on that, correct?
Yeah, they, they...
Our comp time is paid every week or time.
Okay, it's not...
Not a time now.
Okay, because that's, and I'd rather want it as the time and a half, okay.
Yeah, that's the thing, it's just paid every week or time.
Okay.
Because I have an hour for now.
Right. And is there a certain time period that you have to use?
The policy is that you earn four hours, we earn eight hours a month, and we're encouraged to use that in that month.
In, during the month, okay.
At certain times, I mean, I have, I have 14 now, but that's only because, well, Josh had it in his family or his city, and just certain little thing, but we try to use it at that moment. They don't want, I mean, the book says, "Try to use it within 30 days." I believe that's what it says.
Okay. I mean, we can talk about it later, but after everybody's had a chance to look at it, just had those concerns about all those unfunded liabilities to the city or how that was used. And then Wendy had explained to me, like, where employees, the city, Louisiana, where you would, when you first started, if you get X amount of vacation hours a year, you got it on your anniversary date. So like, the first year, you really didn't have any, any hot vacation or anything built up, but if you needed it, then you kind of borrowed it, and it was very convoluted. Then they just went to the, you were, you know, break down to whatever, 6.8 hours of paycheck or something like that. I didn't know if that is something, I would leave that up, might be to the employees, if they like it the way it is, we keep it, or if it's something to, and I don't know how much more really, but that way, somebody sort of waiting, if you used it up, but you needed it, or if you can earn it a little bit at a time, that may be beneficial, something to look at as well. But I would say I would leave that up to the employees, because they're the ones who would be the ones that could help or hinder, so I wouldn't, but just something to think about on that as well. But I don't know if we want to maybe, my recommendation would be, because it talks about PTO versus vacation, and I know that approaching comp, that people are gonna know that PTO is something, so I don't know if we maybe should set a specific date to, or one of the council meetings actually look at this.
Workshop?
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah.
The employee, I think it'd be a lot, because I got a lot of time. Maybe a board.
Is, is November, well, we don't know how November's looking. Usually, November, December are slower ones. I would say one of those two, maybe. Just a thought, throw it out there, something to think about.
Probably December, you know, if I'm thinking December.
Yeah, because November is kind of, it's crazy, gonna be crazy, so...
Oh, right. So we can do a, maybe a personal policy workshop in December?
Are you thinking at the regular council meeting, or are you thinking at a separate?
Yeah, I think it's way more comfortable. Even before, half an hour before.
Like at 6:30?
I can make Richard make dinner.
Perfect.
We're on to staff reports.
Sorry, I was able to get a little Tim at Herco today, and unfortunately, they are not going to be able to check seal all this year. Their machine broke down a month and a half ago and had something to do with the rollers on it. And he didn't tell me that they weren't going to be able to do it. And I was waiting for a bid and didn't get one. And so he says, you know, June is the earliest they're going to be able to chip seal, so. Um, but Wendy mentioned some, something today about Keller and Scott looking at grants for paying and that kind of thing, so maybe we'll revisit the whole situation in April. Like, start getting on it in April, so that we can figure out what we want to do. And we might have to look at Poe or someone else, too, because, you know, I wish, I told him, and he came up here and rode around with me, took all the measurements of all the streets and said, oh, we need three bids, this much, and this much, and this. And then I was waiting, 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 and then, um...
Yeah, we need, we need some streets.
Yeah, um, I think that's about all I have is about Poe.
I got a couple things. Uh, actually, I wanted to ask Sheriff Ritchie a question. I appreciate you coming down. As far as, uh, let me put you in the hot seat, though. As far as our, uh, ordinance enforcement, now, who's responsible to, like, if we call, if somebody's breaking an ordinance and we call the sheriff's office, are they the ones that issue a citation? Is that how that works?
Yes, so if you call up at dispatch, dispatch will send a deputy down, and then the deputy will write the citation for the ordinance if it's something that needs to be done.
Okay, we need a little clarification, because we've had some mixed information that, uh, I guess somebody had said that it wasn't, I'm not sure if it was a deputy or what, it said that it wasn't their responsibility, that it was our responsibility. And I thought it was, you know, your guys, and we needed to, we just wanted to make sure we had clarification on how that works.
Right, we, we, we write the citation.
That's kind of what I figured.
Um, there is some talk, I think, um, Tennessee, I think, got a, um, put in for a person that goes around and enforces ordinances part of, like, a couple hours a week or something like that. But they're the, the little things, like your grass is too long, or your fence is not aced and stuff like that, or too many junk carved or whatever. Um, and I don't know how that's working. I have, could talk to Art, probably, he's from Moscow. He, and he's on the council, so I don't know how that's working or not. Um, Troy has considered that, too, I think. They just want somebody that'll, um, enforce the little dinky stuff that's really not like an emergency or not like a hurt somebody else type thing or whatever, but some of them are, I'll use the word petty, but maybe some of the more petty things. So I can find out how that's going, but really, I don't know that it's necessary we can take care of it. So we write the citation.
All right, well, thank you. Uh, also, we needed to figure out the, um, lighting ceremony. As far as, we are still in the lighting part regardless. Uh, and I have some possible dates for, I really don't want to decorate on Halloween, because that just seems long to this period of the year. Well, yeah, I was actually looking, I think it's the seventh.
Yeah, that's precisely.
Yeah, the seventh and possibly the eighth, uh, doing some decorating down at the park, and hopefully we can get it done. If not, we'll still have another weekend to finalize things or, you know, get it all decorated and test it out, so it all works smoothly. Uh, can you check into that sale that they have at, uh, MBS like we were last year? And maybe get some more of those better lights, because they'll really... Yeah, I noticed there's... Yep, yep, I noticed they're starting to put some of that out. I know they have that one day sale. We still have one string we bought after, uh, at the house there that we'll bring down. So we just need to figure out, I'm curious as to everybody else's thoughts as far as the ceremony itself would be the, I think it's the 22nd. Is that the one, right before?
That's Sunday, right before Thanksgiving.
Yep, I think that's what we decided. I haven't reached out to Mary Lou yet, just because, uh, if we're not going to have it, then there's no sense of, you know, doing that, so. There's my phone. Uh, just curious, is there rest of council's thoughts as far as with the, the COVID-19? I mean, there is room to social distance, but we do bring heaters down, and everybody likes to huddle around the heater. So I just don't want to add any more to the pandemic, but I don't want to, you know, I mean, it's such a big event for us and a lot of people really enjoy it, so.
Does it go for it?
Go for it. Nikki?
I'd say go for it.
I'd go for it. I mean, we could, you know, put something in our name about, just like, I know it's, you know, I already did message the key, like, hey, wash your hands, and so, this is, and wear a mask. Like, okay, I get it. Um, but I think we put that out, and then if people choose to wear a mask or not to, everybody's got their own opinions on those, but I think that we put those areas out there, right? Because, you know, and if people are concerned, they don't have to.
Yeah, what are your thoughts on the CLP, uh, selling cocoa, like, we usually do, that might be able?
Yeah, I was wondering about that, and also as far as maybe, because we have such a long period for choir and the carol, and the dancers and everything, if we kind of...
Streamline it this year?
Shrink it up a little bit, but, yeah, I don't know as far as, I know that there's precautions that you have. We would have to make sure that we have lids on everything, everybody serving wears a mask, wears the latex gloves. What is the, well, there's three of you, or four of you sitting there.
My, my brothers do not do it, but what do you think?
Well, I just, it, it's that same thing. I think it's, because it's always, we have donated cookies. We make, everything's made, and so it would be that whole thing of if somebody gets sick, it's, it's us.
I know, like, real bad.
So I would say, but then I'm not here, so it's like, it's easy for me to say.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think I'm going to make an executive decision and say, we won't provide cocoa because it's this year.
But I'll reach out to Mary Lou and Mr. Ritchie to see if they want to come down. And it might be that we just flip the lights on, have a little speech, have the mayor do his countdown and put them on. But at least we'll have some of it, so if you can put, uh, that in the newsletter. I don't know if the newsletter will come out before decorating day.
It, it comes out at the beginning of November, so that was, that was one of my stack important things, is do we have anything that needs to be in the newsletter, so, um...
Of course, if anybody has any questions or anything, they can, you can put my home phone number down.
Should we, what, what time have we done that?
Uh...
I'll have to put that, let me go back.
I think we did it at six. We did, we did seven one year, and that was, seemed really late. And I think we bumped it back to six, yeah.
Six is better for the girls, big hands.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I put 4:30 last year. Maybe it was just one week off there.
Yeah, I think we started setting up at 4:30 and had everything lined out. And we started at like five to seven, and the lights came on at six.
Yeah.
But I think this year we'll just...
Start at six.
Start at six, they can dance, they can sing, lights on, all the same time. And I'll reach out to Mary Lou and see, like I said, I haven't reached out to her, because I didn't know for sure how this whole COVID-19 thing was going to work out.
Okay, six o'clock, November 22nd.
Yep. That's all. You might put in there that they're not selling, or not selling cocoa this year.
Bring your own cocoa.
Bring your own.
Bring your own cocoa, stop it. Sell the root beer on your way down. Yep.
What about the schnauzer?
Ask Booker about that.
On the back side.
You have to make it drive all the way around. Right side is cocoa, back side.
There's two pots in here.
Um, my only thing I wanted to say is, uh, Justin, did we, did you put more white paint on the sidewalks at the school?
We were waiting to find out if Herco was going to chip seal, so Josh did go down and buy the paint. And so we are ready to do it in the next available nice day.
Okay, Dory was asking me.
No, we, that's why I called today and tried to find out, because if they were going to do it, we didn't want to pan it and then chip seal it, so.
Okay, and then I, um, was kind of upset, because the bridge is, is repaid, but there's no new walkway.
No new bridge yet.
But I called and I talked to people at the safety, and I talked, I yelled at Buddy, because I can yell at Buddy, and, um, he said he knows it's in the, in the works. And he said it'll probably be next year that they'll put the walkway out.
Well, I thought they were supposed to replace that whole bridge. Yeah, they, yeah, they, uh, one engineer that even said we had to replace the whole bridge. She replied, like, 2020 or 2021.
Yeah, that's what I told you.
It's supposed to be this?
Yeah.
Yeah, you could do it this year.
Yeah.
But at least we're going to get a walkway on it at some, some point. I just keep Buddy. That's all I have.
Ready?
Um, yes, I have, I talked to Scott, like, Justin mentioned Scott at Keller. Um, he did our transportation plan study. Um, there are some funding deadlines coming up for that, that I gave everybody. You should talk that list, um, that we can apply for, and we'll need to call to them soon. And that's something that Keller can help us with if you so choose. Um, we did a sign grant last year, so we'll be getting our, our new signs, um, point this year, uh, because we got that. Um, it looks like safety projects might not be something that we can do, because we don't, um, qualify for that. But we can consider going for the road construction or maintenance, or the sidewalk and pedestrian projects. So, um, it, it's something that he would be happy to come in and talk to you guys about and, and give you more information. But at this point, it probably would have to be a special meeting that would need to be called, um, because the next meeting is November 10th, I want to say. Um, the first, uh, grants are, are due to be applied for, I think, on November 16th, so that's just not quite enough turnaround time for him. So, um, if you guys are interested in any of that, and you want to set up a special meeting, we can do it, or we can look at it next year if you feel like we've got too much on our plate. If Keller does apply for the grants, obviously, then we have to pay them to do that. And if you get the grants, then you can pay, no? We do have to pay out of pocket for the...
Yeah, you can't pay retroactive on the out of pocket grant. And there's a city match, the construction grant, like, for maintenance or the chip seal, it would cover the cost of chip seal, but no engineering. It only covers construction. So you can need to go after construction or design funds, not both in the same year. But there's not a lot of design for chip seal. Basically, you have to create a match, you can go out and bid, and you have to publicly bid on, so it's really minimal for bidding more than anything. But if you're going to chip seal, only push off till next year, that's a really good maintenance project, typically, if it's in the plan.
Well, I mean, we could listen to what he has to say and kind of get an idea of how much. I don't know, I'm just, I'm wondering how much it's going to cost to, like, other than the safety or the sidewalk and stuff, or same thing as far as the construction with the engineering? You have to pay for the engineering. You can go for one or the other.
Yeah, the safety grant's a little different, because you can do a double, you can apply for a two-year. So you can put it in the grant that you're looking at fiscal year 2021 as your first priority for design. And then your application would have fiscal year 2022 construction. So to get the design, you're already ranked, pre-ranked for 2022 funds for construction, because they pay for the design, they obviously want you to construct it. Um, so you can piggyback on that way, but you wouldn't be able to do construction in the same year, just the way the windows fall, because the funds aren't available till like July of next year. And then you'd have to construct still in 2021. So to get the design done and construct before winter's pretty tough, typically. But I would say I don't work for Keller, but if they're going to go after the grant for it, it's always good for the city to go after the grants.
Yeah.
So related to the traffic plan or transportation plan, if there's a grant that you guys are eligible for, optimal, especially if you have chip sealing and maintenance stuff, it's usually a small effort to put the grant together for these. It's not like a block grant that takes you 100 hours to do. It's like a 10 to 20 hour to be able to put these together.
Well, we should...
Go ahead.
Well, we need to, if we were to do this, we're going to have to advertise, like, Kelwyn's time. I was arguing for doing this October 19th for the, uh, Winter Pond Election Meeting. Can we, or not, is there, just, you know...
We don't have to advertise for Keller, but just them give us information, right?
It would still be a public meeting, because you, we would have a quorum.
Right.
So, um, it's 48 hours notice. We're not talking publishing or anything like that.
So we could, but that is an informational, that informational meeting we're having on the 19th?
Yeah.
So we could do the public meeting before, after, or a different day? Or, because we only need 48 hours notice for the mayor to call to all special meetings. So we could even do it later this week. Or, I don't know, I mean, I don't know if anybody wants to have it come up in...
I think we should listen to what you have to say.
I think we need, we need sidewalks.
Yeah.
My street, my street definitely needs sidewalks.
Natural required on the sidewalks, so, just saying.
So we just have to, this is, might be something we can listen to, and then maybe have to try and budget for the following year.
Well, you wouldn't be applying for grants then this year.
Oh, right, because we'd have to apply for them this year for...
To get them next year, yeah.
Next year.
We could listen to you since.
Yeah, I think so, especially on like, we're a strict meeting, because there's no magic required. So if you get a grant, I haven't really thought about that, you know, I have a budget to manage. Yes, the, the sidewalk is, you know, it's not that much, 7.34% compared to like, what we see normally shoot. But, yeah, I just think we just need to pick a, if we can do it, point of money, if we want to do it a different date, but we definitely serve the city to hear what he has to say. I mean, he'll hit $100,000 for growth projects that we know we need to do, you know. We doubt not to.
It makes our money grow much better.
Yeah, exactly, we're not, exactly, so.
Well, if it's on Monday, I can do 6:30, see your list, I can do, I won't be home till 6:00.
So we're like, 6:30 for the Keller meeting, and 7:00 for the election meeting?
Right.
Well, I guess as long as it works for Keller.
Yeah.
Yeah. Did you have any...
Uh, just if anyone has anything else they would like to see in the newsletter. I got the, the park, so this will be November, December newsletter.
And it comes out before the bond election?
Just before.
Is there anything in there about the bond election?
I'll put something in there.
That's all I can think of.
How about you, Brian?
Nothing important. Auditors coming November 3rd and 16th, I think, or 18th. So there's only two of them coming, November 3rd in the afternoon, just to help we get everything together and see how things work out, so. So they're hoping is we'll be short this year, we'll get it all done. They'll have, be able to do the city council by January, so. But I called them, too. I mean, I should have to call them and set up appointments, so. Get it done. Otherwise, nothing else. Everything's one fine.
Well, I move to the jury. Well, I move to the jury.